If you do wish to do that, hand your slip over to our secretary over here, and we'll gladly call you up for your comments if you haven't done that already. So the public comment, we're gonna pass since there's no one here speaking to that, and I'm gonna go to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the commission request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. A total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the commission on items that appear on the consent calendar. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the commission secretary. Speaker cards will be called in the order received. Steel images may be displayed on the projector. All other audio and visual use is prohibited. Public comments may also be submitted by email for inclusion into the record. Email comments must be received prior to 6:00 PM and submitted to planningcommission@temecula.ca.gov. All public participation is governed by council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by resolution number 2021-54. And tonight on our consent calendar, we have item number one, approve the minutes of our May 7th Planning Commission meeting. And that's all that's on the consent calendar night. Can I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Watson, seconded by Commissioner Solis. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hearing the four to zero vote on that. We've got item number, the next item on our agenda tonight is regular business. Members of the public may address the commission on business items that appear on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the commission secretary. Speaker cards will be called in the order received. Steel images may be displayed on the projector. All other audio and visual use is prohibited. Public comments may also be submitted by email for inclusion into the record. Email comments must be received prior to the time the item is called for public comments and submitted to planningcommission@temecula.ca.gov. All public participation is governed by council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by resolution number 2021-54. Item number two, general plan consistency review of the proposed draft fiscal years 2026 through 2030 capital improvement program budget sheets, long range project number And I believe Katie Garcia will be making the presentation tonight. Katie?
Thank you very much. Good evening, Vice Chair and Commissioners. Today I will be presenting the Capital Improvement Program General Plan Consistency Review. I do wanna start just by adding that you will see a hard copy of the proposed budget sheets in front of you. There's also a copy out in the lobby for the public. This is because our digital copy did not get uploaded with the staff report, so just wanted to make sure you had the hard copy as well as the public. In addition to that, there was a project added this morning, so you'll see that kind of last, the La Paz roundabout budget sheet in the top cover. So just wanna let you know what that's for. If you have any questions on that, I'm happy to answer that. Otherwise, I'll go ahead and start the presentation. Okay, just some background. Section 65402 and 65403 of state planning and zoning law requires that the Planning Commission review and provide comments to the city council regarding conformity of the Capital Improvement Program, CIP, with the adopted general plan. Planning Commission's role is to review the draft CIP and determine if the projects are consistent with the city's general plan. There are five project categories totaling 100 projects. So there's 25 circulation projects, four housing projects, 50 infrastructure projects, 19 parks and recreation, and two community facilities district bond-funded projects, totaling just under $900 million. The 25 circulation projects proposed include interchange improvements, traffic safety enhancements, as well as maintenance and rehabilitation work. These are just a few examples of some of the projects included in those 25 circulation projects, such as the French Valley Parkway improvements, I-15 congestion relief, flashing beacons and speed advisory signs, and other maintenance and rehabilitation work. The four affordable housing projects consist of the Habitat for Humanity project, the Los Haciendas project, the Vine Creek project, and the Uptown Temecula project totaling 143-plus units. The units are still to be determined on that last housing project for Uptown. That's the reason for the plus. And there are 50 infrastructure projects, a big one being the Comprehensive General Plan update. Other projects include enhancements and improvements to the bike lanes and trails, the Old Town Parklets program, and EV charging stations. There are several public safety infrastructure projects that include citywide sidewalk projects and an update to the local roadway safety plan. The 19 parks and recreation projects include the enhancements to the Children's Museum, the skate park at Ronald Reagan Sports Park, and playground equipment enhancement and safety resurfacing. Projects also include renovations and repairs to the Mike Nigar Community Dog Park and the Harveston Community Park Building. And lastly, there are two projects funded by community facilities district bonds, which include the Butterfield Stage Road Extension and the Nicholas Road Extension Improvements. Staff has reviewed the general plan and has determined that all 100 projects are consistent with the goals and policies of the land use, circulation, open space conservation, growth management, public facilities, public safety, air quality, and community design elements of the adopted general plan. The staff report also indicates the specific goals and policies of the general plan. And this here is the added project that was not initially included in the staff report, so we'll, this is just to make note of it now that it will be included. This is the La Paz Road Roundabout Reconstruction. So just a last minute addition, wanted to make note of that as well. And staff has reviewed the draft fiscal years 2026, 2030 CIP projects and has defined it as not a project under the SEQUA guidelines section 15378b4 and is exempt under SEQUA guidelines section 15061b3 and 15262. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution making a finding of consistency with the general plan for the draft fiscal years 2026, 2030 capital improvement program, including the addition of the La Paz Road Roundabout. And this concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions. We also have public works here if there's any project-specific questions you might have.
Thank you, Katie. Questions of staff? I'm gonna start with Commissioner Watson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Pardon me, a couple of questions. I hope you'll, I'll try and align them correctly. This one may go to Mr. Moreno at, under circulation projects. But I saw in the plan that there was mention of Rainbow Canyon pavement rehabilitation. Is that still?
That is complete. That project is complete. I will say this for any other projects you're gonna be asking about. This CIP budget always keeps projects that are not completely closed out, and by that I mean it takes a year for warranties and everything to be completed. So therefore, there are completed projects in this budget book that we are done with.
That makes sense.
So Rainbow's one of those.
That is, that Rainbow, I will tell you as an aside, at the risk of being repetitive, we say a thank you to you every day that we drive that road. That was such a masterfully done job and quick.
Thank you.
Okay, a couple others. Let's see. Under circulation projects, policy 1.2 talks about pursuing trip reduction in transportation systems management measures to reduce and limit congestion at intersections along streets within the city. What, can you describe what are those trip reduction measures?
Yeah, typically what we do is we go after HSIP projects through the Caltrans and through the state through grant fundings. And what we do is we try to optimize the traffic signal systems in order to, yes, reduce those amount of trips that people may end up going to one arterial rather than another arterial. So it's kind of a general project sheet that we use, but we continue to fund it through various other grants and funds, funds that we end up getting from the state.
I think I got an education on that where it talks about the different levels, like a C. I think they're reverse ascendancy, so A is your fastest, and then, is that right? A level A, level C, level D?
Yeah, if you're talking about level of service, that was the old way that we analyzed traffic, which is still utilized today, but today, level of service has really been replaced by VMT and SEQUA. And so that's the means by which we analyze whether streets are congested, are they failing? But level of service is always kind of a good fallback for us to look at to see if something is warranted in the area, such as a traffic signal.
Gotcha, thank you. One other one. In policy 3.5, again, under circulation projects, it calls for the city to promote the use of alternative clean-fueled vehicles, new transportation technologies, combustion engine alternatives for personal and business use. Can you tell me what shape those, that promotion of alternative-fueled vehicles takes?
Yeah, a few years ago, when the federal government started coming out with certain mandates to have different types of vehicles, our fleet was going to be impacted in that. I mean, we were gonna have to go to electric vehicles, electric maintenance vehicles. This CIP sheet was put here in order to establish some funds to put together, like, for instance, we did charging stations over at our facility's operations center. And so there was available for future fleet that will be utilizing electric, but employees can use them as well. We have put them in the parking structure here, so it's kind of a general sheet that just keeps getting refunded if we find locations that are gonna be needing these alternative means of, and non-combustible, you know, vehicles. But it'll stay there for a while.
Does, what's a level or type of charger? I think there's a one, two, and three. What do we have at city facilities?
No, we have, we have the lower-level one at the FOC. We have superchargers over at Sixth Street Parking Lot. So it depends, you know. At different locations, we have different levels. So we do employ all different levels.
Thank you. I had a question also under the land use element of the, of the policy, at policy 1.2, and I think it's 1.6, calls for the, it calls for the promotion and the use of innovative site planning techniques and the encouragement of flexible zoning techniques. Can you give me a little, can you color that in a little bit and tell me what that about?
Yeah, so we, we have several mixed-use zones as well as PDO-specific plans, and this is what kind of allows for the flexibility in zoning districts. So that's kind of what that aims to. I don't know if Mark or Matt wanna add to that.
No, I think that answers it. We try to be flexible, and that policy promotes that.
Fantastic. Under infrastructure, I had a question. It was kind of a lingering question, cuz I'm the rookie on the Planning Commission, but it goes back a ways to the, to the matter of the auto mall wayfinding signs that we had before. I was confused about which way the funding was gonna shake out on that. It was my understanding that, pardon me, the dealers were gonna pay for it, and then I thought there might, there was some question about whether the city was gonna pay for it. Can we explain who's, how that's, the funding is sourced for that?
Yes, sir. As the, sorry, I was the one who took that, brought that before you, so I figured it'd be best for me to get it from the source here. As the ordinance was written, I interpreted the language to mean it said the auto dealers would subsidize the cost of the signs. I interpreted that as the auto dealers would pay for the signs. The intent was from the city manager's office that through their tax, their sales tax contributions, that would be their contribution to the sign. So the city will be funding it, forgive me, but regaining or recouping that cost through the sales tax of the auto mall.
Perfect, thank you so much. Under, again, under infrastructure, at item 18, it talks about, let's see, hold on. Actually, I think I understand that one, if you can believe it. Can we talk a little bit to item 50, vacant parcel cleanup and beautification? Does this refer to city-owned or privately-owned parcels? If they're privately-owned, is, do we get into like forced abatement circumstances or liens, or what's gonna happen there?
So from my understanding, this stemmed from when we anticipated the Olympics coming to Temecula, so they intended to have this budget sheet for that. But since that has changed, this is kind of more like a placeholder, so I don't think that it's, it's kind of in that planning, initial planning process, but they wanna hold it just because it stemmed from federal funds.
Very good. I saw mention, last thing, I saw mention under Parks and Rec Projects, pickleball courts. And this may fall in line with what Mr. Moreno said. Some things are legacies or holdover. We're not getting more pickleball courts, are we, or?
No, pickleball is complete.
Yeah, that's complete, so like Rainbow Canyon, it's just a legacy holdover. Okay, thank you very much.
Just project closeout.
Those are all my questions. Thanks very much for the information.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Watson. Commissioner Hagel?
Just a couple of questions. The, the column on the capital project expenditure summary, there is a column that says 2024 to 2025 amended. That's pretty much filled with dollars in there. Are all those dollars, dollars that are spent in this calendar year?
Those are spent dollars.
So is that just from this year, or is that from this year and previous years for those projects?
Previous year is what the projects have accrued.
Okay, that's what I kind of, okay. The only other question I have is related to the traffic signal fiber optic extension and all the things that, all the different projects that relate to the fiber optics. What is the status of that?
We've had multiple projects complete already under the HSIP, so our goal is to connect the entire city with a fiber optic network. There are still some signals out there that are using traditional copper, but our arterials are done, so Temecula Parkway, Rancho California Road, Butterfield, Ynez, so those are all complete, but we just need to fill in the rest of the city by switching over from copper to fiber.
So the, basically, the six north, south, east, west roads, the big ones, are all done, so it's the other smaller roads, is that?
Correct. Yeah, there's a lot of signals throughout the city. We have 132 signals, so we've got a ways to go in residential areas to connect them, but we're working on it slowly.
I did notice going up and down Margarita throughout, you know, I've taken several trips the whole entire way, and a couple times I've had no red lights at all. So I have noticed a large improvement in, in the traffic signaling, so that's really a great thing.
Thank you.
Thank you, yep.
Thank you, Commissioner Hagel. Commissioner Solis?
Hey. One question, just, I had a question about the bikes. I saw these multiple projects, and they range from 50 to 185. Is that for the construction of these different types of projects?
What page are you?
So I'm looking at page 107 in the Capital Improvement Program, and it says bike lanes and trail programs citywide. And then after the last one says future projects, so is that just like a projection of, like a new project that will be coming in five years that maybe the city, is it kind of just like a placeholder?
It is. Commissioner Solis? This is, it's a lot like a placeholder, it's basically seed money to get those projects started, so it could be design work, could be hiring a consultant. Those are shown on one sheet. Once, once we fund those and they move forward, then they'd have a separate CIP sheet in coming years.
Okay, so this amount is only for soft costs? It's not for the actual, physical construction?
Correct.
Okay, that was my, okay. All right, that's it. Thank you.
And I have one question for Mr. Moreno. On the citywide pavement rehab project, does that include the neighborhood slurry seals, that type of thing?
Yeah, so, that's a great question. So we, you know that we try to do our, all our local streets within a 10-year timeframe. Well, we completed all the local roads in about seven years. So this year was the first year, we're not going into the neighborhoods, but we're getting Rancho Way done, Felix Valdez, and Santiago. And so those are, those need some major rehab, so it's going to take all the slurry money, and then we're gonna get back on the neighborhoods next year.
No, they'll, they'll be due, so.
Yeah, they'll be due.
Okay, thank you. Make sure we don't have any speakers on this item?
We have none.
Very good. Okay, can, I'd like to hear, anybody wanna make a motion?
I will. First, just a comment. I noticed there is, I think, 100 CIP projects that are on, on the sheet, and these are only major projects the city is doing. And for any organization to be doing 100 major projects at a time is mind-boggling, and I just wanna commend all the staff for all the hard work that goes into this and all the vision that, that it takes to keep a city running and keep a city running extremely well. So with that, I will make a motion for approval.
I'll second that motion and the sentiment.
Very good. The motion was made by Commissioner Hagel, seconded by Commissioner Watson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and it's a four to zero vote. We'll move on to public hearing. I'll put my glasses on. Any person may submit written comments to the commission before a public hearing or may appear and be heard in support of or in opposition to the approval of the project at the time of the hearing. If you challenge any of the project in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the commission secretary at or prior to the public hearing. For public hearings, each speaker is limited to five minutes. Public comments may be made in person at the meeting by submitting a speaker card to the commission secretary or by submitting an email to be included into the record. Email comments must be submitted to planningcommission@temecula.ca.gov. Email comments on all matters, including those not on the agenda, must be received prior to the time the item is called for public comments. Any person dissatisfied with the decision of the commission may file an appeal of the commission's decision. Said appeal must be filed within 15 calendar days after service of written notice of the decision. The appeal must be filed on the appropriate community development department form and be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee. All public participation is governed by the council policy regarding public participation at meetings adopted by resolution number 2021-54. Item number three on our agenda tonight is long-range planning project number LR23-0490, an amendment to the existing objective design standards. And Eric Jones will be presenting the staff report tonight. Eric, your stage is yours.
Thank you. LR23-0490 is an amendment to the city's objective design standards. And then just to give you a feeling for how the presentation's gonna go, I'm just gonna provide introduction, kinda how we got here. I'm gonna have Alan from Placeworks come up, who actually did the amendments, so I'll discuss those with you, and then I'll close it out with a conclusion. So it's no secret the state continues to pass multiple housing bills, all aimed at trying to streamline and increase housing production. Amongst some of those have been the requirement to have objective standards instead of subjective standards with certain residential projects. So in response to that, the city went ahead and created our own objective design standards back in 2022, and it was applicable to multifamily and mixed-use developments. Well, the state has come and made some changes, and that's what we're reacting to today. So right now, with the way it stands, is they wanna add single-family residential development being required to go through the objective design standards. And it's gonna be for projects that are more streamlined, so the ones that deal with SB330, SB35. But an important distinction is, the state has now pulled out SB9-related projects, so those are not gonna be subject to the objective design standards. So what is the new document going to apply to? What's it gonna be applicable to? Well, as was originally approved, multifamily, mixed-use development, and as I just mentioned, the single-family residents are also gonna be required to go through these. We've also been a little bit forward-thinking and trying to anticipate what the state's gonna do next, so we've also added in this revision accessory dwelling units, as well as the accessory structures greater than the square footage you see there on the screen. But I do wanna point out, though, that the architecture that's been part of the document, the materials, all those types of things, those are gonna remain unchanged. That's, that's all staying the same. With that, so I'd like to bring Alan up from Placeworks to describe some of the changes in the actual document.
Thank you, Eric and Commissioners. It's always happy to be here in Temecula, you're one of my favorite clients, and love continuing to do your work with you. So as Eric mentioned, the objective design standards that we created in 2021 and adopted in 2022 addressed only multifamily mixed-use development. They didn't address this question of single-family scaled projects. And so the work that we did over the past year was to create a kind of module, if you will, to insert into the existing standards to address that, that development typology. And what we found as we worked this through with city staff is that the questions that you would apply to a single-family scale building are very different than the ones you would apply to a multifamily development that might be, you know, potentially 100 units in one single building, or some other combination of larger-scale buildings. And so we really felt like we needed to add kind of just a separate section that was specific to single-family, which is what we did. When we did that, we had to apply a couple of sections, you know, introduce a couple of sections. So the key one here is on the applicability page, page two, where we sort of lay out what does this apply to. The red box highlights an insert that we made where we ended up saying that, you know, if you were a multifamily project or a mixed-use project and now a single-family project, which were the specific sections you needed to review in this document? Because the document's quite long and it covers a number of pages, but if you're doing a single-family project, you don't need to review every single page. So we really wanted to provide this kind of streamlined roadmap to say, these are the specific pages you need to look at. So if you could read that, 4.5, 5.5, et cetera, those deal with architectural styles. The 2.1 deal with site planning or kind of building design issues. So if we're gonna, the next slide, I'll kind of highlight those in particular. So we introduced this under general building standards, and this applied originally to these, like, is it these large multifamily developments that could be 50-plus units within a single structure? So we ended up inserting this kind of new subsection that dealt with single-family scale development in particular. And so there's a kind of introduction here on section 3.3. I'll look at it on page 23. And then there's two pages of general building standards that apply to single-family only. And so those, just give you the next two pages, just so you can see them. So the next slide. If you're doing a single-family development, these are the only two pages you need to look at, in addition to the application of architectural style, really covers all the things you need to know. The one thing I do wanna kind of highlight, if we go back to the previous slide, is slide A, or, or, not slide A, checklist, standard A there, individual structure shall be consistent with one of the architectural styles. Eric already mentioned, all those still apply, although the application of those styles is a little bit more streamlined for a single-family development. And then B, kind of a long set of language and standards there, but what that basically gets at is that if you're doing a development that consists of multiple single-family homes, once you pass a threshold of 25 individual buildings, you now have to apply multiple architectural styles. So we have seen, you've probably seen this in neighboring communities, where you get these large-scale developer developments, and it might be 50-plus homes, and the developer comes in and they take the same architectural Spanish style, and they just go chunk, 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 and they just keep repeating it. The neighborhood gets very generic and very boring very quickly. So we have this kind of clause that says, once you pass this threshold, you do have to mix it up with the architectural styles, consistent with what's been defined elsewhere. So it's kind of a key idea that we put in. The balance of everything that follows really has to do with kind of overall modulation, configuration of garages relative to front entrances. A lot of this was drawn from the existing single-family design guidelines that were in effect, so it really kind of echoing a lot of the standards that were already in play. So that really covers the kind of primary ad that we did to the document from the previous work that we did in, as I said, 2021 and 2022. After staff concludes presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions of staff?
I've still, got a little bit more to go. Just as a reminder, the city council gave the Planning Commission authority to go ahead and finalize this project if you saw fit to approve it. From a SEQUA perspective, we're looking at exempting it per section 15061b3. We did have a couple of edits to the document. Commissioner Hagel had pointed out, actually, a better definition for kicker in the glossary section. So you can see what's currently in the document, just a piece of wood, et cetera, et cetera. And then the revised version is a lot more thorough, so we're gonna go ahead and plug that into the document. The other minor change we're gonna do is the photo exhibit of a kicker. There on the left is what's currently in the document, and we're gonna swap it to calling it what it actually is, and that's a knee brace, so that'll get taken care of there. So based on the information that's presented, staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the resolution and adopt the objective, revised objective design standards. This concludes our presentation. I'm available for questions, and we have Alan here as well, if you'd like to speak with him. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. And before I open the public hearing, I would make sure that my colleagues have any questions of staff. We'll follow the same We'll follow the same. Mark, Bob?
Fernando?
Yeah, I have a question. So, so this, so before, I just want to be clear that this new amendment would require all single-family houses to go through the, the design review? I mean, to go through design guidelines?
The, the single-family homes that are required to go through design guidelines are the ones that don't fit within the development standards that we currently have. So this is kind of what we have to follow if they're trying to propose something a little bit different.
Also, like, kind of like an ADU that will be in the front yard, that's only four feet
Yeah, in the, in the-
From the front yard.
In the ADU, well, in the ADU example, you know, there's multiple choices, that they can either build something similar to what's there architecturally, or they can pick the objective design standards, or they can build what's in the code.
Okay. A little confusing to me, that. So anything that deviates from the code?
Mm-hmm.
Today? And in this scenario, also I have a question. So if someone wanted to design like a, like a new modern house, would that, would someone be able to buy a vacant land and build a modern house?
If they're going to be using the objective design standards, they have to use the different styles that we've already listed on here. Modern's not one of them.
So, okay.
These would only be applicable if you were to buy a lot up in, say, Meadowview, for example, and you wanted to come in and build a residence. You could do that, as currently is. The objective design standards are only for streamlined projects. So if you're coming in under a streamlined project issued by the state, whether that was SB 35 or SB 330, like Eric mentioned, these would be applicable to those. We're just trying to, the state's been taking away all of our planning tools we have, and we're just trying to give ourselves as many tools as we can, this being one of them.
Got it. I understand now. Thank you, that clarification.
Great, thank you. Okay, Commissioner Watson?
One question that just occurred to me. I had a little question about the release schedule. So if it's, let's say, an aggregated development, you know, with multiple-phase releases, and they, a developer, builder releases, say, twenty at a time, instead of twenty-five, do we consider the aggregated number of homes altogether, or just the release schedule for applying this?
That is a good question. I think I'd defer to city staff how they would handle that. What we have typically done in other communities, as we've addressed that explicitly in our design standards, to say, it applies to, you know, if you're doing multiple phases, the first phase has to be consistent with the design standards. You can't be reliant on a future phase that may never happen, because the economy goes south, or you sell, or whatever. You can't be dependent on that future phase to be compliant with the design standards.
We would go based on the total number, regardless of phase.
Beautiful, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, with that, I'm going to open the public hearing. Do we have any speakers?
We have none.
Hearing that, I will close the public hearing and entertain discussion or a motion from my staff, from my colleagues. This is a pretty straight-up issue, I think, so.
Unless there's any discussion, I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Move by, moving to staff recommendation?
Yes.
Moved by Commissioner Watson, seconded by Commissioner Hegel. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that item passes four to zero. Thank you very much, Mark, and Eric, and Alan. We'll move on to item number four. Planning application number PA 25-0016, a third amendment to, in the development agreement by and between the City of Temecula and Lennar Homes Incorporated, a California corporation, and Winchester Hills One LLC, a California limited liability company, to rescind the First Amendment to the Development Agreement and reinstate the original term of the Development Agreement for the Winchester property located within portions of Planning Area 12 of the Harveston specific plan. And I believe Scott will be leading the discussion, staff discussion on this item.
Scott?
I will try my best. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. As you stated, this is planning application number PA 250016. It's the Winchester Hills Development Agreement Amendment Number Three. So also, as you stated, the Third Amendment to the Development Agreement between City of Temecula, Lennar Homes, and Winchester Hills LLC. Winchester Hills LLC is not a party to the amendment. The succession and interest chain is now Harveston SAB South as a signatory to the amendment. Essentially, the amendment will rescind the First Amendment to the Development Agreement and reinstate the original term of the Development Agreement for the Winchester Hills property within portions of Planning Area 12 of the Harveston specific plan. This Third Amendment is at the request of the applicant and not requested by the City of Temecula. Essentially, the only reason it's before you tonight is with all development agreements, the city signs the development agreements. So we have to bring this to hearings, Planning Commission and City Council for the amendments. So a little bit of background. August of 2001, the City Council approved the original Development Agreement. October of 2007, the City Council approved the First Amendment to the Development Agreement. That amendment extended the term of the original Development Agreement. January of '23, the City Council approved the Second Amendment to the Development Agreement. The Second Amendment is the same as the Third Amendment before you tonight, but on a different portion of property. So the original Development Agreement exempted the owner or developer from paying Tump fees and MSHDP fees. The First Amendment extended the term of the Development Agreement, and when they did that, both WR cog and the RCA took a position that due to an amendment to the Development Agreement, that the owner developer were no longer exempt from payment of those fees. So when we did the Second Amendment, it rescinded the extension of the term of the Development Agreement. It did not make any other revisions to the Development Agreement with respect to the development of the property. But what it did allow is allow the owner or developer to then go back to the WR cog and the RCA as, that the projects are again exempt from the payment of the fees. So the Third Amendment, which is exactly the same as the Second Amendment, rescinds the extension of the term, does not make any other revisions, and then will also now allow the owner developer to go back to WR cog and the RCA to get the exemption from the fees. So this is the amendment area. It's in Harveston. It's the Prado Development. Development is now about a third constructed. So just to give you a little bit more context on the amendments, the Second Amendment signees were the Heirloom Farms Project, whose Meritage Homes, Audi, Solana Winchester Apartments, Lantern Crest Assisted Living, and a commercial partial here that is also owned by the Lantern Crest Development. And then finally, we have the Third Amendment signee, who is also at Meritage Homes, but is the Prado Development. Terms of environmental, it's exempt for Section 15061B3, the general rule, because it can be seen with certainty that there is no possibility that the adoption of the ordinance may have a significant effect on the environment. So with that, staff does recommend that the Planning Commission adopt the proposed Planning Commission resolution, recommending the City Council approve the Third Amendment to the Development Agreement. That does conclude staff's presentation. I'm here for questions, and the representative of Harveston SAB South is also here.
Very good. Thank you, Scott. Do any of my colleagues have questions of Mr. Cooper?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just a couple. Mr. Cooper, I'm wondering if, I just want to be sure I understand the background behind why Western Riverside took the position that the property owner or the developer was no longer exempt from the Tump fees?
In our communication with them when we were doing the Second Amendment, the second that any change to the original Development Agreement was made, they took the motion that they were no longer exempt. So you could have done anything to that, to the original Development Agreement, and they would have taken that stance. So by rescinding and going all the way back to the original Development Agreement, we fall under those terms now.
Okay, very good. And then, does, just so I understand, I think you said it at the top of the, at the top of your presentation, but that Winchester Hills One, I want to be sure about their standing, because I know they're on the, I think they're on the reso. Is Winchester Hills One at all a party to this?
They are not a party to this, and Mr. Berry could probably do a better job of explaining that than staff could, as he is the signee on the original Development Agreement and the amendments.
I saw his signature on more than, more than a few documents. I recognized you right off the bat. Well, no, suffice it to say, I guess, that, Mr. Berry, that Winchester Hills One is not a party to it. It's now Meritage and SAB, right?
We can call him up later when we're ready for, to open the public hearing.
Off track there. That was all I had. Thank you, Mr. Cooper.
Bob?
So what's changed with WR cog and RCA that they have changed their position?
They didn't change their position, it's just that they wanted the terms of the original Development Agreement to be the ones that we are looking at.
Oh, okay.
So nothing has changed.
Okay, got it.
Solis? No questions? Very good. I don't have any either. So we will open the public hearing and ask the applicant to come up and answer any questions that the commission may have. Good evening.
Good evening. Vice Chair, members of the commission and staff. My name is Steve Berry, and since 1995, when I got into this project, I've been the owner of Winchester Hills One, Harveston SAB, Harveston SAB South, and Harveston SAB North, but it's all the same colors that were up there. Things just changed over the time. So the original concept is still in place. But I'm, any questions or clarifications that you need? Scott's report was very accurate. We did this once already with the Second Amendment, and now this is just finishing it up for the Third Amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Would you have questions for Mr. Berry?
Only briefly, but I think, I think I have a pretty, pardon me, a pretty good understanding of it. So I think Winchester Hills One, that wound up operations like in 2010, did it not?
It did, yes. We did a refinancing, and the lenders required that we switch and have a new entity, because lenders are very goosey about having entities that may or may not have liabilities, they don't know. So when they made the loan, they wanted it in a clean entity, and so we created Harveston SAB and transferred all the assets in there and made our lender very, very happy, because they didn't have to look over their shoulder in case Winchester Hills One had problems that nobody knew about. It didn't, but they were just having belts and suspenders to be on the safe side.
What a great explanation. Very clear, thank you.
Sure. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Berry.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any speakers?
We have no further requests to speak.
Very good. With that, I will close the public hearing and ask my colleagues for a discussion and/or a motion. Any discussion?
I don't have a discussion, no.
Very good. Everything seems to be up front, and...
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, the staff recommendation? Okay, very good. Motion is made by Commissioner Hegel, seconded by Commissioner Solis. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that's a four to zero affirmative vote. Congratulations, thank you. Okay, we'll now move to item number four. Planning application number... Five, not four, right? Thought that sounded wrong. Bear with me here. All right, item number five, continued from May 7, 2025, Planning Commission Meeting. Planning application number PA 24-0363, a development plan for the Alter Private Recreation Center and Village C1 Park. The recreation center contains an approximately 1,991-square-foot recreation building, approximately 1,437-square-foot multipurpose building, approximately 1,017-square-foot pool building, pool, spa, cabanas, fire pit area, and barbecue area. The park contains two pickleball courts, a half-basketball court, picnic areas, and an open turf area, APNs numbered 940-320-001, and 940-310-013. And once again, Scott Cooper will be making a staff presentation. Scott?
Before the staff presentation, Commissioner Hegel has to make an announcement.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Hegel.
Okay, I'm going to recuse myself and be leaving the dais. I have a potential conflict of interest due to the fact I own preferred stock in a sister company, and do not want to have any conflicts.
Very good. We will wait for you to exit the room. Doesn't happen too often, but once in a while, one of us has to excuse ourselves due to the law. So with that, now I'll turn it over to Scott.
Oh, thank you once again, Mr. Vice Chair. This is planning application 240363, a combination of the Alter Recreation Center and the Village C1 Park. So as you did states, a development plan for the private rec center and the Village C1 Park. Here on the screen shows the location. It's up in Alter, up in the hills, being graded right now. And then, as a reference, the star shows the location of the Main Street Bridge. So a little furthermore about the project location, so this is what was before you on August 21 of last year, for the first 467 homes that were approved. So Old Town Temecula would be to the bottom of the screen. This is Ridge Park Drive, Vincent Moraga, Sixth Street, and then Main Street. So what was previously approved is Village A, B, C1, and then a combination of C2 and C3. This shows the location of the recreation center, and then directly adjacent to that is the Village C1 Park. So for the recreation center, it's two acres, and it does contain a clubhouse, recreation center, a multipurpose building, pool building, pool and spa, cabanas, fire pit area, barbecue and dining area, shade structures, bike racks, and paved parking. There are thirty-two parking spaces that are required for the specific plan, and there's thirty-three parking spaces that are being provided. So where is all this stuff within the recreation center? So go down the screen, the circles will show where the locations are. So you have the clubhouse, the multipurpose building, the pool building, cabanas, fire pit, the barbecue and dining area, and the shade structures. And then finally, the bike racks that are on the outside. And then this is the shared paved parking that's in between the two uses. The park is two and a half acres. This is the original site of the elementary school that also contained Village C1. It was the location more specifically of the sports playfields for the school. Obviously, we know by now the district did not accept that land, and therefore it could be developed as residential. So the park area does contain two pickleball courts, half-basketball court, shaded picnic areas, open turf area, seating and picnic areas, and bike racks. And a quick note on that basketball court is, according to TCSD, Community Services District, that's one of the most needed amenities in the city. So it's really good that we're getting this. So even though it's, the park is Park C1 of Alter, it's open to the public. So this shows the location of the pickleball, the basketball, shaded picnic areas, the open turf play area, seating and picnic areas, and bike racks. And this just shows the interaction between the two as a whole. So in terms of elevations, this would be the clubhouse, and then, if we remember back from the presentation at the end of last year, the specific plan does not dictate architectural style, so they don't have to do Monterey, or Spanish, or Craftsman, as they can kind of choose whatever they want to do. So what they did is they chose buildings that will complement the architectural styles that have already been approved up there. So it's nothing that's going to be completely different than what's already going to be built, so it kind of combines everything. So, and that would be the same here for the pool building. And then, I've got a couple of renderings here for you. So this is the view from the Alter Vista Roundabout. So you can see it looks a lot better in the rendering than it does in the flat images. And then, this would be the view looking south. And then, this would be the view looking north. Terms of landscaping, there's 65% landscaping on the project site, and those do include the Holly Oak, Valley Oak, Western Red Bud, Baja Duster- Western Red Bud, Baja Duster, and Blue Chalk Sticks. In terms of environmental, section 15162 for subsequent EIRs and negative declaration because the project isn't consistent with the previously adopted Alter Environmental Impact Report. Staff does recommend the Planning Commission approves PA 240363 subject to the conditions of approval. Those conditions were provided to the applicant. They had no questions on the conditions. That concludes my report. I am here for questions, and Brookfield is here and their entire design team.
Okay, very good. Before I call the applicant up for questions, I'll have my colleagues direct any questions they may have at this point to Scott. Go ahead, Fernando.
Question, Scott. In what process do the phases in this project happen? Is this the first thing that happens, and then the houses, or?
So that's a good question, because we actually just had this conversation on our, we do a bi-weekly meeting with Brookfield. So this just came up last week. So their goal is to have the models, the rec center, the park that's here all open at the same time. So when people start moving in, you know, they're going to have immediate access to these amenities, which is, you know, they're not moving in and waiting nine months before they can go to the pool.
And is there some kind of condition in the project that these amenities will open before the houses get completed, or like?
No, that's not something that the city would require. It's obviously better for the developer to have that happen. And so that, that's what they've stated in terms of their phasing to us.
Okay. That was my only question. Thank you.
Great. Mark?
I have none.
None. Okay, with that, I will open the public hearing and ask the applicant to step forward. Should we have any questions?
That's why we're here.
Great.
Good evening.
Your name?
My name's Colin Cook. I am representing Brookfield this evening. Thank you for having us, commissioners.
You're welcome. Okay, do we have any, any questions on the applicant?
My, my question about the phasing and what's the, what's your goal to, for the completion of either or, of the community center or the first phase?
The timing of it?
Yeah.
Yeah, so to Scott's point, we did have a discussion about this. There is actually a condition that is derived from the tentative map and the specific plan that requires that we have this constructed, I believe, before the 300th building permit. Our goal is to be well ahead of that. When we open a community, we want to present the amenities as a, a value to our homeowners. We're not just selling homes. We're creating a community. So we'll open models hopefully sometime early next year. When those potential homeowners come to see those models, we want to be able to take them to that rec center and say, here's what goes with the home. Here's, here's the value you're getting by living here. So that's a big part of our experience and what we aim to do, and we see no reason that won't be achieved.
Could I ask, this may be too deep a dive, but from the renderings, how big's that pool? How many gallons of water in that thing?
4,900? Square feet, so. Yeah.
Gotcha.
Yeah, we usually think about area, not necessarily volume.
Will the, will the homeowner's assessments, will, will that provide for, or is there any requirement for that to be a lifeguarded pool or no?
No, I Is that what it is? Okay.
It's over five, that's the threshold. I didn't know that. Thank you. That's all I had. Thank you very much.
Of course. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Do we have any other speakers?
We have none.
Hearing that, I will close the public hearing and ask my colleagues to move forward.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Solis, seconded by Commissioner Watson. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that's a three to zero vote with Commissioner Hagel out of the room. You may come back in now, I believe. Bob, if you're hearing me. Okay, that passed four to zero, as I said, and congratulations. Be anxious to see movement up there. I'm getting comments from people now, whoa, what's going on with the hillside and that? So as soon as we see buildings, I think a lot more people are going to be satisfied. So keep charging ahead. We're all for it. So, thank you much. Okay, and next item on our agenda tonight is commissioner reports. We'll wait for Commissioner Hagel to come back in. Maybe, did Mark go out to get him? Great, thanks. I used to tell jokes, but I got in trouble, so we'll just pass time. There he is.
I only don't want to be in a solitary.
Welcome back, Bob. Okay, you're just in time for commissioner reports, so I'll start off with Commissioner Solis, if he's got anything.
No report.
Very good.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hagel?
Uh, yes, I attended the ribbon cutting for the path, the trail.
Santa Caturdas.
Yeah, Cencurus Trail. And it was, there was a lot of people there. I was surprised. I think there was probably about 50 people there and a lot of very excited people. The trail was immediately filled with bicycles afterwards, so. And that trail is going to extend eventually all the way out to wine country. So it's a great walking trail, and I'll be walking it soon. I also attended Culture Fest this past weekend. It was quite different than today. It was cool and kind of rainy-ish, but the Culture Fest went very well, and it was surprisingly pretty well-attended given the, given the weather.
Thank you, Bob. Any report, Mark?
None, sir.
Very good. With that, we will move on to subcommittee reports. Am I unaware, I'm unaware of any subcommittee meetings, so I don't think we have anything to report there. Very good, that that will move on to the Community Development Director report. Mr. Peters?
Just want to let you know tomorrow is the budget workshop. That'll be in the conference center at 9:00 AM. If you can't make it, it will be live streamed, so you can tune in and see what's happening with the budget. And then on June 5, we'll have State of the City at Pachanga. So I just wanted to make sure you had that on your calendars. So that's June 5. It's on Thursday morning. 7:30. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Public Works Director report, Mr. Moreno?
So we saw that the Winchester, excuse me, the Temecula Parkway northbound on-ramps were completed last Sunday morning. There will be another closure for the Smart Freeway project. It'll be the Rancho California Road northbound. We don't have a date on that yet, because as you know, we have the Balloon and Wine Festival. We're trying to negotiate with RCTC. That's all part of the I-15 Smart project. And then also, if you've noticed, the south bounds have been restriped, K-Rail's been put up. That's all the Caltrans Ox Lane project. So that's going on at the same time. So a lot of, a lot of construction happening right now.
Thank you, Ron. And with that, I believe we've went through the agenda, and we can all go home. So I'm going to call this meeting adjourned, and we will meet again at our next regularly scheduled meeting, which I don't have the date.
June 4.
June the 4, right here, same time, same place, 6 o'clock. Please come. It's an entertaining evening. Thank you for coming tonight. Appreciate your participation and hope we've, we've done what we were expected to do. Thank you.